Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 21, 2019. If you could please join us and rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This call the roll.
Councilmember Guskoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Deemer.
Here.
Councilmember Geiser.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Deemer, second by Kicker to adopt the agenda in a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first item on our agenda this evening, we are going to welcome the Coon Rapids Women of Today here. And the Coon Rapids Women of Today have set aside June 23 to recognize the many activities of dedicated women of today across the state, and have asked the city to declare June 23 Coon Rapids Women of Today Day. So if you ladies would like to come up, I will meet you out in front of the dais. Hello, hello. Oh, we have official shirts and everything, nice. Well, welcome. Maybe you can introduce yourself, and then I'll read the proclamation here.
Thank you. I'm Beth Clifford, and I am our membership vice president.
I'm Jenny Orr, and I'm one of the co-presidents.
I'm Sherri Boyk, and I'm the state delegate.
Very good. Well, whereas the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today have set aside June 23 to recognize the many community activities of dedicated women of today across the state, and whereas, women of today believe that through us, great lessons can be learned, worthy deeds performed, and a hand of fellowship extended to millions of women everywhere. And whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today are dedicated to actively promoting such public awareness and service programs as the Minnesota Milk Bank for Babies, Wishes &amp; More, Breaking Free, True Friends/Camp Friendship, and the March of Dimes, as well as projects, educational programs, and fundraisers for the Coon Rapids areas, such as a yearly Santa shop, back-to-school drive, and the Coon Rapids Chili Challenge. And whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today provide personal enrichment and leadership training for members of all ages. And now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim June 23, 2019, to be Coon Rapids Women of Today Day in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this 21st day of May, 2019. Awesome. Now, tell us what you're about. Tell us what's maybe going on, or somebody just give us a little quick synopsis? Or you don't have to, I can't make it.
So, we are about service growth and fellowship. So, we form friendships and reach out into the community and try and find some needs where we can fill. And then, that's about it.
And help all these other groups.
Yes, as much as we can.
And make great chili. From what I remember, last year you won the Chili Challenge. Are you gonna say that, or do we have to wait for Joan, or what do we? Okay, alright. And the proclamation will actually be ready to go here. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for everything. Anything else?
No, that's enough.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the May 7, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstain.
That motion carries. Johnson and Deemer. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 items on our consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license for 4th of July community celebration to the Coon Rapids North Star Lions. And I love how the middle name is, or the middle of it. Stephen A. Wells, on behalf of the Coon Rapids North Star Lions, has applied for a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to be used at the 4th of July community celebration to be located at the Coon Rapids Ice Center/Boulevard Plaza, 11,000 Crooked Lake Boulevard on July 2, 3, and 4, 2019. The appropriate fees have been paid, the certificate of insurance for liquor liability is on file, and the background investigation has been completed and approved, I might add, by the police department. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to midnight from July 2 through July 4, 2019. So with this, we will be approving the temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for the Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at the 4th of July community celebration from July 2 to July 4, 2019. Next item on the agenda is to approve the waiver of fees for the 4th of July celebration. We will be approving the waiver of the fireworks display, carnival, 5K, 10K run, walk, and parade license fees for the 2019 4th of July celebration. Um, five, uh, then we're looking to adopt Resolution 19, this is item 5 on our agenda tonight. Uh, we're looking to adopt Resolution 19-51, accepting donations of funds from the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation, Home Improvement Foundation. Um, and I'm just gonna read this because it's really actually quite exciting. The Coon Rapids, well, at least I think it's exciting.
Yeah, that's exciting.
The Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation created a new exterior curb appeal grant program at their December 2018 meeting. This program was named the Front Door Grant Program and was meant to serve as a pilot program with an initial budget of $100,000. The Front Door Grant Program was kicked off at the city's annual North Suburban Home Improvement Show in March, and was on the front page of the city's newsletter later in the month. Funds were available on a first-come, first-served basis. Over 300 applications were received by the end of April, and all of the initial funds were quickly committed. Staff met with the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation Board on May 2 to review the activity in the Front Door Grant Program and to request additional funding. The board approved $150,000 to be allocated from their board-operated 82,000 fund. Uh, since these funds are being transferred, uh, the city needs to be, um, the city must first accept this donation of funds. I guess it's just so key that this program is so successful, and there was that many people that applied for it, and that's just amazing. And it's grants for the front of the home, it's for the driveways, it's for exterior improvements, things that improve the curb appeal.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure, Brad.
So, my question is, is this $150,000 over and above the initial $100,000?
Yes.
So we're talking about an investment of $200 and 1/4 million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
Yep. So, thank you, Councilmember Johnson. So with this, we'll be adopting Resolution 19-51, accepting $150,000 of Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation grant dollars to be used in the city's new Front Door Grant Program.
So cool.
Item 6, we're looking to approve the Cooperative Agreement for Public Safety and Security for the 2019 3M Open. The 2019 3M Open is coming to the City of Blaine on June 28 through July 7, and the event and related social events require a significant security presence that is beyond the capability of the City of Blaine Police Department. The attached Cooperative Agreement outlines the rights and responsibilities of each party. So basically, the scheduling of Coon Rapids officers for security services will only be done in a manner so as to not impact the safety and security of Coon Rapids. There will be, there will also be no impact to the city budget, as police expenses will be submitted for reimbursement once the event is over through funds provided by the 3M Open. So, we're looking at entering into a Cooperative Agreement to provide public safety and security related to the 2019 3M Open and related events. Item 7 on this evening's agenda is to adopt Resolution 19-52, setting a hearing for miscellaneous assessments, 2019, um, sub 1, I guess, parentheses 1. Um, let's see, we are going to be setting, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct the, alright, let's just start at the beginning. The city council must set a public hearing as required by state statutes. At that hearing, the city council may refer appellants to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the Board of Adjustment and Appeals will then give their recommendation. This is, this is to consider miscellaneous assessments to be certified to the county for collection with the 2020 property taxes. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on July 11 and make a recommendation to the city council at the August 7 council meeting. Staff will incorporate the process in the required mailing to the property owner. These assessments include services provided to taxpayers, in most cases, code enforcement violations. The terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed. The proposed assessments are categorized by the number of years to be assessed and the interest rate recommended. So we'll be adopting Resolution 19-52, miscellaneous assessment declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment roll, and ordering the public hearing for June 4, 2019 on the proposed assessment roll. Item 8 is to accept a right-of-entry agreement with E&amp;R Investment LLC. E&amp;R Investments LLC received site plan approval on November 20, 2018, for construction of a new indoor self-storage facility, which is to be located at 220 101st Avenue. The right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants, valves, and to flush the water main system. The utility system within the site is considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain it. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate fire protection. So with this, we'll be accepting the attached right-of-entry agreement with E&amp;R Investments LLC for their new self-storage facility at 220 101st Avenue, Lot 2, Block 1, Cardinal Heights, Platteau. And item 9, which is our last item on our consent agenda, is to accept a right-of-entry agreement with Green Bay Packaging. Green Bay Packaging received site plan approval on March 21, 2019, for the construction of a 100,500-square-foot expansion to the existing facility located at 555 87th Lane. The right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants, valves, and to flush the water main system. The utility system within the site is considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain it. And this right-of-entry agreement, just like the last one, simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate fire protection. So this last item on our consent agenda will be to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Green Bay Packaging Incorporated for its facility located at 555 87th Lane. And that's the consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move approval of all items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, and a second by Deemer. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Deemer?
I just walked past somebody who had done the front door program, and their new driveway looks really nice compared to the old driveway, so, uh, just another endorsement that that program is making things look better.
Everything's happening right around you. You got a home for generations.
I know.
Across the street, the front door next door, and...
First time I've ever been in that neighbor's house. It looks beautiful.
Yeah. Councilmember Wells?
On the same topic, I'd just like to point out that, if my math is correct, that $250,000 will generate about $1,005,000 improvements in the city.
Yeah, that's awesome.
It's, it's, it's an absolutely tremendous program. It's just, yeah. Alright, any other discussion or questions about the consent agenda? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And the consent agenda is adopted. Item 10 this evening is to consider an emergency mill and overlay repair on Exava Street, Project 19-18. And, uh, this is the one that was brought to my attention by my UPS driver. What are you guys gonna do about Exava Street? And, uh, you were already on it, so, um, anything you wanna hit on this, or, um, or do you want me to read the discussion points, or?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Mr. Hammer?
Just to do an overlay on the roadway, save a whole lot of time and money on patching and personnel costs. Uh, it's not an assessment situation for the homeowners. We're gonna fund it out of our street maintenance program, and we have extra dollars due to a lighter program with seal coat and fog sealing this year. Happy to answer any questions.
Alright. What's, what's the scope of this project, and do we have like a distance in miles, or a half-mile, quarter-mile? Do we know what it is? I'm just curious, 'cause to get this done, for $145,000 to get a really good road there again, that's, that's a pretty, seems like a pretty good deal, compared to the rest of the numbers we're looking at.
With this one, Mr. Mayor, you have, it's all the way from Coon Rapids Boulevard to Mississippi. Uh, what you have right now is, nobody is prepared to do paving work, so, right, you gotta get the concrete worked on, you gotta get the utility worked on. So you've got contractors that are sitting waiting, so the other work gets finished. So they're, they're in working on other projects throughout the city, but there's nothing ready to be paved yet. So they've, they've got the equipment, they've got the supplies, they got everything they need to do it, they just don't have any work to do. So if we catch them now, before the beginning, and that's why we put a short window on this, and it'll be done presumably by the end of next week, right, after Memorial Day, that, that was the price we got to be done at that period of time. So it's, it's a three, four-day project for them, they get their paycheck, they move on to a different part of the city and continue their work.
Suddenly, I'd like to do a mill and overlay of a lot of stuff, and maybe hold off in 19, too.
We missed the window. We missed the window.
Okay, Councilmember Kicker?
So, what is the depth of the pavement? I mean, it must be such that we're, you know, we were able to do a mill and overlay on this, then?
That's, that's correct. Councilmember Kicker, we did, we did several pavement cores, about a dozen pavement cores up and down the corridor. We measured the thickness, and it was about 5 and 1/2 inches throughout, so an inch and 1/2 is what we're proposing to do, and that will be adequate for the pavement section that is there.
And what is our new standard that we're moving to?
Well, typically, our, our local streets, we're reconstructing with 3 inches of asphalt total, and that's fine for the neighborhood streets, local streets. Collector's streets, like Zavis, or Exavis, are 4 inches minimum.
Zeon, Exeon, Zavis, Exavis.
Zavis.
Councilmember Guskoviac?
I have a question. I know, so, emergency repair, Mr. Hammer mentioned that there's no assessments for this mill and overlay. Is that typical of all mill and overlays? If there's, if we were just going to do a mill and overlay, budgeted, there's an assessment process?
Councilmember Guskoviac, yes. We instituted that as an assessment, uh, two, three years ago. That was added as kind of half the cost of your standard assessment, 'cause you're getting about half the life expectancy of it. And since this road was reconstructed in the past 19, 20 years, um, and because we've already gone through the assessment period of time and everything else that's out there, if we wanted to go that route, we'd be starting with public hearings and notices, and it, we'd be ending up paying the prices that we're paying on some of our other jobs to go through the public bidding process, even if we get bidders on it.
Yeah. Thanks for the clarification. Councilmember Geiser?
Well, I certainly am excited. I probably have gotten more calls on Exava Street, but it's just been a mess. So, um, I think there'll be a lot of happy residents once this is done.
Were you, was that a motion?
I will make, sure. Are we ready?
I think so.
I thought there was a, did we have to do a public hearing here? No? Okay. I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-18-9, awarding a contract to Northwest Asphalt in the amount of $145,073.28 for an emergency improvement by mill and overlay of Exava Street from Coon Rapids Boulevard to Mississippi Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Hearing none? What?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know, when, when do we, when would this start? And how soon?
We're gonna try to start as soon as possible, late this week, most likely next week, or the following week, so. Right after. Let's hope for it to pass, and hit it that week. Weather dependent.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Soon.
Alright. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Under New Business, item 11 is to consider introduction of ordinances for code revisions related to multi-unit recycling collection. Mr. Fernelius, or, does anybody want a presentation from Ms. Sinclair, or anything? Or, Mr. Stemwell? What are we just going for? Do you want me to read this description, or what?
Well, Mayor, Council, uh, Ms. Sinclair certainly can provide a summary if the council would like.
Okay. So this is something, this really isn't a, a large step off. I mean, this is just kind of cleaning up some stuff, and we've workshopped this. And, um, before we introduce it, I just had a question, if I could just figure out what I did with it. Um, item 11, come on, let's get back to item 11. So, I guess, in the, in the introduction, it talks about the recycling quantity standards set at 10 gallons per unit per week, and, um, and later it talks about minimum weekly service capacity of .05 cubic yards per dwelling, per dwelling unit. Um, I, I would guess, the, in the ordinance, it just talks about cubic yards, correct? It doesn't talk about gallons?
Gallons, sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought I had this figured out.
It's just a...
It keeps skipping around. Alright, well, let's get to my other question then, 'cause I can't even figure out how to get my arms around that. Number D, under 7, it says, "For multi-unit residential uses, centralized collection, the city will adopt a policy and requirements," and then A, B, C, and then D, is such policy will be kept on file in the office of the director. Who, what does that mean? Who's the director, and do they have a file for everybody in their drawer? Or, I don't understand that.
Your honor.
Mr. Brody?
I can explain. We do define director within the Chapter 8, the Waste Man, or Waste Collection Ordinance, and it's the Public Works Director, Mr. Hammer. And so, that's, it references that, and that's why it uses the same term, because he's defined as the director under, under that. And so, he being the overseeing, overseeing Colleen in her department, obviously she'd have a copy of it, it would be made available, probably be on our website.
Okay. So the city will adopt a policy and, so that's, okay, so it's the city's policy that he'll have in his drawer. Okay. Alright, never mind. I'm okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? Or just my confusing things? Sorry.
No, I'm gonna start referring to Mr. Hammer as either the director or overseer.
Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, it's just cleaning up language, making things in alignment in a couple of different places, and, and starting to have a standard for recycling at multi-unit, which I think is a good thing. It's, you know, we're not overly aggressive with it. You know, people are pretty close to all doing that already, but it's just showing that that's an important thing that the city cares about, and that we should be doing at all of our locations, so.
It's, you know, it, it's nice to have this cleaned up, it's nice to have, you know, some guidelines, but this is still... I, I find myself looking in recycling bins, in recycling dumpsters, or whatever they are. We do a terrible job of recycling. You know, recycling is tied up in plastic bags, and there's things in there, you're going, you can't res, oh, you know, so it's, it's like this whole, this container thing, it's probably good, it's good to have guidelines, but it's still, the education is really the key, and somehow, and this includes educating, so hopefully that ramps up and works. Councilmember Deemer?
To, to drive a point on that, I, um, I'd seen an article recently that our recycling as Americans is so dirty, that the old policy of shipping it to China on a boat to have them clean it up has gone bad, because they no longer take recycling from America, because we put so much food and other junk in our recycling. And so we do all this work to try to recycle stuff, and it ends up in the garbage anyway, because we put so much other junk in there. So for a little while, Malaysia was taking it, and now they won't take it either. And so your, your point is well taken. If, you know, if we want to actually do something with our recycling, we, we have to pay a little more attention to what we throw in there, and not assume it's gonna get sorted out. That said, I, I think this, this ordinance makes sense. You know, it's setting a minimum bar that's maybe slightly above where we are, but it meets, to me, the, the goal of the state law that says everyone must have access to recycling. And I think you do need a minimum standard to really call it access legitimately.
Alright. Um, okay. So if there's no other questions or comments, then we will consider ordinance, the ordinance amending city codes 8-214-7, 8-215-2, 12-914-5, related to multi-unit recycling collection introduced. And if you're, if this impacts you, I suggest you go to and look at the council packet and see what it looks like, 'cause there's a lot of stuff there. Um, alright, item 12, um, consider introduction of an ordinance to add 2-1200 reasonable accommodation. Mr. Brody, anything you wanna hit on this? It, um, just looks like it creates a policy that we needed that we didn't have.
It creates not only a policy, but a process, and it's sort of outlined in the ordinance itself, um, the standards that, you know, an application we made to a staff, we've actually created that application, so we get the information that we want, staff will review that, and it'll be brought for the council to make the decision. People will be notified that are adjacent to the property if necessary, and so, we're just looking for an introduction tonight. Obviously, we anticipate we probably will get an application, because that's why we're putting this together, but at this point, we're just putting the process in place to do just that.
Okay. And just for...
To be frank, it's based on similar processes that other cities have adopted.
Okay. And for context, the Fair Housing Act determines that reasonable accommodations in housing must be made to those with qualifying disabilities. The FHA protects those who are recovering from substance abuse, are not actively using, and are working to achieve long-term sobriety. These persons are considered to have a disability under the FHA and are, and are a protected class. The FHA applies to cities and its land use and zoning laws and practices, therefore, in some cases, a locality must make a reasonable accommodation to those who are classified as having a disability, thus allowing equal opportunity to housing under the FHA. And now, this, we've got the application, and if this eventually passes, then we'll have the process.
Correct.
Alright. Does anybody have any questions on this? Councilmember Johnson?
Your honor, thank you. Mr. Brody, there, and I passed on some of these comments to the city manager as well. I, I like that we're doing a process. I appreciate that the list that is there of considerations, or the factors under which we're going to evaluate this, is a, a non-exhaustive list. It's, the very last one in paragraph 3G says, "Any other factor that may have a bearing on the request," which is kind of general in nature. It might be nice to include that the request shall be evaluated under the following, you know, non-exclusive factors, or whatever, just to make it even a little bit more clear. But I did wanna have you consider whether we should have put in here something along the lines of whether, um, the request creates any articulable, um, public safety concern, or risk to public safety. I can envision certain situations where there might be a request to expand occupancy beyond a point where there is an articulable reason that risks public safety, or there could be other considerations as well. So I'd be happy to talk to you about that. I don't know if that kind of change would require any alteration, or whatever, but...
I would think that it would fit in, under, my guess, and this is sort of a standard that's set out by a lot of case law that's been established and it's been used, is that a fundamental alteration, I would argue, of city regulations, policies, and procedures.
Right.
Put under that envelope, and so, as we're considering, that's a fairly broad category, as we're considering these applications, if something like that were to come up, that that would be what we'd be looking at, or at number 7.
Right, and I appreciate that. It's just that if you have the opportunity, when you're creating a new ordinance, to be real clear, that public safety is one of those things, and...
I get a little cautious on public safety in this realm, in this area of terms of, you know, it has to be a direct threat, and, you know, you can't use, you know, rely on sort of, hey, the neighbors don't like it, or they're concerned, you know?
That's why I refer to it as...
In a general sense, so, I, you know, I like, in some ways, I like the generality of this, 'cause it does perhaps allow some flexibility, but I certainly appreciate your comments, and, like I said, I don't think it would require a fundamental change if, if something, bring something forward next time, that would require us to reintroduce it.
Okay. And, and I think that you still preserve those other arguments as well. Um, and that's why I use the phrase... And that's why I use the phrase articulable risk to public safety. It's not just that there's some general concern for public safety, it's that there's a real articulable risk that can be, can be made, but I appreciate it, and I'm in support of the ordinance ultimately being drafted and enacted.
And I wrote down the word articulable, that's a great word.
If you can say it.
Well, that was my first shot at it. I'll practice.
I had to rehearse before I came in here.
Mayor? Councilmember Gruszkowicz?
Will we see a, a request application form before this?
I certainly can attach that to the next agenda.
Okay, that'd be great.
Excellent. All right, well, with no further discussion, then we will consider ordinance to add chapter two dash twelve hundred reasonable accommodation. Let's see, I better just go from here. We will consider adding, the ordinance to add chapter two dash twelve hundred reasonable accommodation, which provides a process for requesting a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act, we will consider that introduced. And our last item in our new business is to consider resolution nineteen dash two sub nine, awarding a contract for MSA Street Reconstruction Project nineteen dash two. And this is for Wedgwood Drive from Main Street to Round Lake Boulevard, Olive Street from Main Street to 121st Avenue, and Foley Boulevard from 124th Lane to 115th Avenue. Open house meetings were held last November and January. And the next open house will be the neighborhood meeting to introduce the city and contractor project staff, but I suppose we should probably pay for this first, right? Anything we need, what need to cover on this, other than the bids came in really high? We had, well, we had one bid on this project from Park Construction, six point three, six, six million three hundred nine thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and eighty cents, which was about twenty, about twenty percent higher than what we're anticipating. But as was explained, that's a product of tight, a tight labor market and escalating costs of materials, and if we wait, we'll probably be looking at a higher amount, so. I'll stop talking. Does anybody have anything to wanna add, or ask, or move? Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, we actually had a half hour meeting right before this meeting, where this was what we talked about, and, and that, that kind of is the punchline. There's no reason to believe that we're suddenly gonna get a great discount if we wait, and there are reasons to believe we would get a reverse discount if we wait. So as, as it's a, a bit of a tough one to swallow, but, but everyone drives on these roads, and you can tell, because they're in pretty rough shape. So I would move to adopt resolution nineteen dash two sub nine, awarding a contract to Park Construction Company in the amount of six million three hundred nine thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and eighty cents for project nineteen dash two.
Second? Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Discussion? Your Honor. Councilmember Johnson?
You know, I know, and we all know, Park Construction will build a good set of roads in this project, although because they were the only one, and because they're getting this for a significant amount of money, let's make sure that it's a really good road. Foley is just such an, an important artery for, for the city. It, it borders both Mr. Kicker's area and my area in the city, and we, this is our part of Foley. The previous parts of Foley that have been improved have been the county's parts of the road. This is our part, and I would like to see this be a really nice road that'll stay nice for a long time. So even though it's higher than what we had anticipated, given the market, I'm fully in support of moving forward with the project.
All right, any other discussion? Your Honor. Councilmember Kicker?
Yeah, I would just like to add that I'm fully in support of it as well. Not only is it, you know, cost-wise, no guarantee that it's gonna be any less if we wait, but if we wait, we're, we're gonna have to suffer with these roads. I, I drive Olive Street in, you know, into the city hall every time I come here, and that road is terrible, and you've got San Craig Elementary School, that's right there, so it's important that we do this. There's other improvements that are gonna be made on Foley that are really important as well, like the crosswalk. There's been lots of concerns about that, speed on there, so they're doing some things to help that as well, so.
Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to just add that if council elects to award the contract tonight, staff will be sending out postcards for a neighborhood meeting that will have in Woodview Park to explain to residents frequently asked questions, introduce them to the contractor, provide contact information as well as schedules. Everyone that lives on the project is affected by it will get schedules and frequently asked questions, contact information in the mail within the next week, week and a half or so.
And so is, is it gonna be a different date than what you've got here? Because you've got May 29th here.
We've got May 29th, and I, I think, I think we could probably make that work. We'll have to get postcards in the mail tomorrow.
Okay, so if you are impacted by these roads, you are going to get a postcard, but get it in your calendar that there will be the neighborhood meeting, May 29th, in Woodview Park, which is the one over off Northdale and Olive Street, there behind the church.
That's correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I suppose we should probably vote on this. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are at open mic. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic this evening? Anybody here for open mic? All right, we have one open mic response from a previous open mic. And Mr. Bernard Schatz spoke at the open mic portion of the main seventh meeting, and he requested the city council reverse an increase in his quarterly utility bill that was related to the city's senior discount program. He'd been receiving the sixteen dollar quarterly discount on his utility bill. However, after a verification process, it was determined by city staff, determined by city staff, that he didn't qualify for this discount, as he didn't meet the age requirement. By way of background, the senior discount program was established by the city ordinance in 1995 and was intended to provide a 50% discount to seniors on their sanitary sewer charge. This program was modified in 1997 to reduce the discount to 35% for those seniors who qualified after December 1st, 1997. And the approach the city took toward billing sewer changed in 2012 to include a minimum charge for all residents plus an additional charge based on usage. The senior discount program was eliminated except for those who were grandfathered into the program, which was those born in 1935 or before. For those who remained eligible, a discount was applied to the water portion of their bill, because the city's billing software didn't allow for a discount to be applied under the new sewer rate structure. Subsequent to those changes, the city has attempted to verify eligibility for the senior discount every two years. The verification process was conducted toward the end of 2018 and involved sending letters to over 372 accounts that were still noted as receiving the discount. As a part of this process, those who applied for the discount were asked to submit an application and to provide proof of their age in order to determine eligibility. As a result, there are currently 177 accounts that continue to receive the sixteen dollar discount. So I, my question from this actually is, so the change was made in 2012, but then in 2018, we went from 372 down to 177? How had we previously verified them to be old enough, and then all of a sudden have half of them fall off with no policy changes in those six years? Yeah, Mr. Stemwell?
Yeah, Mayor Council, there, there were a couple of things that happened. In, in previous attempts to verify eligibility, apparently all that was done was a letter was sent, and there was a form that the resident just signed off on and returned it to city hall. The difference this time in 2018 was this added requirement to verification of age, driver's license ID, something that verified age. And so some of them, there were a number of reasons why people fell off. I think there was a minor amount of cases in which someone thought they were eligible, but turns out that they weren't, as was maybe the case with Mr. Schatz. In several cases, it was a situation where their spouse had qualified, was maybe a few years older, had qualified, and in this case, the remaining homeowner did not. There are other situations where maybe children had moved into the house and hadn't updated the utility bills, and so the parents were no longer there, and so they fell off. Some just never got returned, and without the verification, the discount was just removed, things like, of that nature. So there's multiple reasons that we went from 372 to 177.
Okay. Did you speak with Mr. Schatz, or did somebody, is he good with this, or?
Mayor and city council, I did speak with him last week. Whether or not he's good with it, I guess I won't try to point that out. I think he understood the situation. And essentially where I left it with him was, you know, under a current structure, there isn't, you know, that's the rate by ordinance that's been set. Actually, it's in by resolution. Our ordinance refers to the city council set it by resolution. Our resolution set the rates every so often, and, and the sewer hasn't been changed for a couple of years. And so I did look back at when that was most recently set. And so at a staff level, we don't have options to, you know, change the system after those rates have been set. And so it's something that if the council was interested in looking at this program a little more deeply as we look at our next sewer and water changes, that'd probably be the appropriate time to reconsider the program or otherwise. I think ultimately the reason we've been trying to get away from the senior discount program is there's a certain amount of basic infrastructure that all residents should be contributing toward replacement of said infrastructure. And in this case, when we move to a different system in the sewer structure, where you're paying a base fee plus a fee based on usage, the theory was that seniors or those who have fewer people in the house will be paying a smaller fee, because now it's at least proportionally based on usage. And so if you have a family of 10 or a single person, your bill will be considerably less, because we're tracking that flow. And so at, at that time, the goal, I believe, as this was a little before my time at the city, or right around when I started, was to slowly get away from that senior discount. We have gone, the number actually was considerably higher than 372. Or your past, I don't know, friend recalls that number specifically, but...
It was over 1,000.
Yeah, so we've actually gone from over 1,000 down to 177 over the last probably four years.
Thank you. Councilmember Wells?
Just wondering if any way of knowing the situation where a spouse was old enough to qualify, and I know that was, you know, the case in, in one person that was complaining about this, never left the home, and now, you know, the surviving spouse is like a year too young. It just doesn't seem like there would be that many of those situations. I don't wanna go back to the senior discount, but these people that have been in their homes for 50, 60 years, and now we're just finding out that, you know, in one case, she was a year too young. I think that may be the case for this gentleman also, but, but they've got it legitimately, because the spouse was there and, you know, met the age requirement. I just, out of those hundred and some, I can't believe there's that many that have been in their homes for that long and qualify. It just seems like we can make an exception for those people.
Mayor Council, I do believe there are a few situations like that. Maybe our finance director could recall if there was more than a handful.
In most instances, there was just a handful of those. Most of them were the people had moved. We looked at the property records from Anoka County to try to determine who was living in the home. Very rarely was it because the spouse had passed away. So I could check on the numbers, but I'm sure it's, it's under a dozen for sure. There weren't very many in that case.
Your Honor. Councilmember Johnson?
No, I, I actually agree significantly with Councilmember Wells. I mean, it seems to be fundamentally unfair to, in essence, de-qualify or to penalize somebody just because their spouse passed away. And if it is that small an impact, indeed, I'd, I'd like staff to look at whether there can be some appropriate kind of procedure for how to deal with that, or, or some kind, and if it requires council action, it requires council action. But to deal with those small and unique circumstances, but I'm fully in support of if there's new ownership in the house, you know, there should...
Councilmember Johnson, a lot of instances were that people just didn't respond to the letter.
Sure.
So I really wouldn't have any idea of those that didn't respond. Only those that would have come in with their ID that got denied, would, we would know.
Right.
In most instances, if they didn't feel they qualified, or they didn't notice it, or I don't, not gonna say care, but they just didn't answer the letter, and so they were removed. So I'm not really sure there's a good process to do that, but we can certainly explore it.
Sure.
I wasn't thinking, I, I concur. I wasn't thinking you would go out and seek all of the ones that didn't respond.
Thank you.
But, but I think that there are a few of those isolated ones that, it, it just doesn't seem fair.
Councilmember Demmer?
And you mentioned that, you know, if it seemed like something we'd be interested in talking more about, maybe it goes to a work session. I think that's enough people to say we should do something along those lines. I mean, just, just quick math. Pulled about 200 people off. It's quarterly bill, it's 16 dollars. It's 13,000 dollars that the city saved by pulling 200 people off. We just spent a million dollars extra on a road. If 20 of them were in the spouse situation, that's 1,200 dollars a year. I mean, it's, it's not worth the disappointment and the hassle to, to, especially for that spouse clause. So I, I think we could probably very quickly come to agreement on the situations that we would like to continue to grandfather. And again, I do really appreciate your context of, we changed the rules, so now you're charged by amount of water you use, so using less water is your discount. That makes me feel a lot better about the other 200. So I think that helps, but, you know, maybe we should talk about it.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor Council, we can certainly look into it a little deeper. Obviously, this particular method is a fairly blunt instrument. The resolution, the code is set up as a fairly blunt instrument, and certainly wasn't a case where we were targeting any particular group. It's just been the effort every other year to, to verify who qualifies. Because we have found each time we've done that, mostly because people move, or don't respond, or life circumstances have changed, that they don't qualify. In this case, with the deceased spouse and the remaining spouse, fortunately, I think that was a scenario that just wasn't anticipated with this one instrument, and it's something we could look at.
Thank you. All right. Well, I think we really spent some time on that one.
Yeah.
About 50 dollars a minute.
Yeah. All right, and we were at other business. Mr. Hammer, what was our final numbers on, on Saturday? That was a very good open house for considering the weather, the Public Works.
Yeah, it was quite surprising, Mr. Mayor. We had about 210, 215, somewhere in that ballpark, so.
A little down from last year, but...
They all came early, tried to beat the rain before it came, but yeah, I think last year we were at 360, 370. So we're down a little bit. Weather didn't cooperate, but still a good event nonetheless.
Excellent. Yeah, it was nice to see the police had the, the training, the training room open, and that was, it was well attended. It was interesting to see Interna without his partner, though. You know, I think there was some disappointment there. It's like, where's the dog? We had an open house on Thursday night for 610 to East River Road. We had, we had an open house with the county, considering the Foley reconstruction from Coon Rapids Boulevard to East River Road. And then we had an open house with the, with the possibility of connecting East River Road to Highway 610. And I would just really encourage the neighbors down there to stay involved in the process. You know, right now, I, I understand, you know, there's, they don't want a road to cut through their neighborhood. I get it. I mean, my, I'm the classic example. My folks moved here in 52, and in 1976, we lost our house to a frontage road. You know, it was the house I grew up in, it's the only house I knew, so it's a very emotional thing. But I, in the big picture, it made that area better. And in this case, I guess I would really encourage them to stay involved in the process. And we wanted to look at the Hanson Boulevard project as an example. The county highway engineer brought in that big proposal for the open house, and everybody gave the feedback on it, and the neighbors didn't like many elements of it, and they just took all of the input, and they just rolled it back up. They went back away, and they came back, and they brought out basically a new proposal that really dealt with a lot of the neighborhood issues as best they can. And, and I guess I really encourage them, we're listening, but we really want them to stay involved in the process. And when it's, if we get the engineering money, and if we can... And when it's, if we get the engineering money and if we can move forward, there will be a time for all of that input. So like, that was what I wanted to mention about that. Okay, any other business? Councilmember Demmer?
Last week, the Coon Rapids High School had their annual biomed student open house, which is one of the things I really like to go to. I'm on the committee for the, you know, we all divvy up the committees, and I was the winner because I got that one. And, you know, just a shout out to the, the teachers and the students and the parents, the proposal, or the, the projects they do, they're really college-level projects that, that these guys are doing in high school. You know, someone took all the cellular structure out of a spinach leaf, you know, in high school. They had a project where they were trying to improve the clotting response for blood transfusions, you know, in high school. It, it was, it was fantastic. And again, a real credit to the, the school district and, and the program they put together there.
I felt, I felt really accomplished making a breadboard in high school, you know? But there was an award given out that night, a significant award, and I don't recall what the award was called, but it was for involvement from, from a community member, and that was Councilmember Demmer, you know, was given that. That was a really nice award, and that was a great honor, so.
Yeah, that was a big surprise. I, yeah, had to give all the kids high fives. But yeah, you know, we were, we were there, and actually, a few levels of government were there, school board, and then also the, at least one state rep was there. And so, it was a kind of a big party for the accomplishments of the students of the school.
Well, it was definitely worth celebrating. It was tremendous. All right. Councilmember Geisler?
Do we want to talk about the Homes for Generations tour?
That was Sunday?
That was Sunday?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so in spite of the weather on Sunday, rain, I think we had over 1,000 people that attended the event. So there were six different properties that have gone through, or homes that have gone through the Homes for Generation Two program. And those homeowners graciously opened up their homes to the public and showcased the work that was done. So we're thankful for that. We're also thankful for the staff that took time on a Sunday afternoon to help out and answer questions. So it was another great event.
So, so as to not completely scare somebody off in the future, 1,000 total for the six homes, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct. About, about 130 in one home, and I think close to 190 in the other. So not 1,000 throughout all six, but that would be a lot.
And it was, it was, we went through all six on Sunday, and all the homeowners just were so gracious, and the projects were so nice, and it's just, it's, it's so wonderful to have that, that amount of investment, and, and I love talking to them. You know, well, we used to live here in Coon Rapids, then we moved here in Coon Rapids, and, you know, it's, I don't know, I, I like to hear that, a little community spirit there.
All right. Any other business come before council? Councilmember Geisler?
Friday's our first movie in the park, so that is Goosebumps 2. So, you know, if we want everyone, so it starts, kicks off the Memorial Day weekend, right? And so, that is going to be at Sand Creek and at 8:30 PM, because I think it just has to get dark enough to be able to actually see the movie. But it's a free event, so, and there's all of the great play structures and fields there with that reworked park, so encourage people to go see that on Friday night.
And even though it's 48 and raining now, we're guaranteeing beautiful weather Friday evening, right? All right. Yeah, this is Memorial Day weekend. Can I, Mr. Anderson? Any updates for the golf course? I love that you sit through the whole meeting, you know, so tell us.
I'm a glass-half-full person, right? But normally, it's filled with optimism. I would say that rain has infiltrated that cup significantly. So I, I don't know if you can do an ordinance, you know, outline rain between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM? If you can, please. It'd be nice if it would stop in the middle of the day. But I guess that's, that's the only complaint I would have because there's a lot of exciting things happening at Bunker Hills, too. So thank you for the opportunity. Our junior program is right around the corner in June. We always look forward to that, junior lessons and leagues. If folks are interested in that, there is still some availability. They can go onto bunkerhillsgolf.com and online store and register for that. And then, the last bunker renovation, the final phase, has been completed. We dodged the weather pretty good with that one, and it's gorgeous. It was a great project, and those bunkers will, this made people happy or sad. Those bunkers will be in play within the next two weeks, so.
Excellent. It's, not being a golfer, I wouldn't see the bunkers, except you just did the bunkers near the clubhouse, and they look awesome. They look just wonderful, yeah. Nice, all right. Any other business come before council? Councilmember Griszkowiac, you got your finger up there.
No, I thought that had something. I thought the administrator had something.
Just got to mention the movie in the park, which you have.
He's going, can we get out of here? All right, any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.